The former provinces.
Good evening, and welcome to the Planning Board meeting of October 28th, 2025, in the Carver Town Hall Meeting Room Number One. These proceedings will be videotaped and rebroadcasted by Area 58 TV. If we could please stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Before we get started on the agenda, there are a few items that we'd like to go over here as far as future meeting dates, because we may have the potential of continuances this evening.
Yes, ma'am, if I may.
Please.
So, we have future meeting dates at the bottom of your agenda. And those future meeting dates include Veterans Day, which is November 11th, but we will not be meeting then because the building's not available. Then November 25th, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, not holiday, but it's the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. And then December 9th and December 23rd, and some people are busy that week as well. So we definitely know we're not meeting on the 11th. So I asked the staff to take a look and see what our options were available. So we have, if the board wants to substitute the 11th Veterans Day meeting for 11/4 November 4th, we have Room 4 reserved for that. The other day rooms, the other week beyond that, November 18th, all the rooms are booked and we'd have to be at the police station. And I think people have expressed a desire not to be at the police station. So we don't have a room in this building.
Okay.
For the 16th. And then we have the 25th. So, you know, what is the board's pleasure for the Veterans Day meeting? Do we want to look at meeting November 4th? That would not have any new applications in for it. So it would likely be a continuance of anything that we've got going on now. And a week's not a long time for the applicants, so we can ask the folks from Wareham Street at that point. But that's sort of our layout for November. So if we can talk about those November days.
Okay.
And see if it works for the board. How does the board feel about meeting the 4th if necessary?
If necessary.
Because with the 11th out here, we've got between now and the whole month.
Okay.
We don't want that.
I'm definitely open to that.
The 4th.
Necessary.
Yeah. We will agree to the 4th.
Okay, so 11/4.
As a substitute.
But not the 18th, because that's the police station.
I don't have a problem. I mean, I do have a problem with the police station. It's not as, you know, accommodating, but I certainly don't want to delay having a meeting for folks just because of the location.
Well, we have one on the 23rd, so it's just a week after, November 25th, that Tuesday before Thanksgiving. So that's a set date. We just know the 11th is impossible. So 11/4 may be our continued date, so we may have meetings on 11/4 and 11/25 at this point.
Okay, all right.
And like I said, we've got the 16th available, but it's at the police station. So 11/4, okay. So in December, we have December 9th and December 23rd, neither of which are, you know, the days the buildings are closed. We do have Room 4 reserved for December 16th, and we have Room 1 reserved for December 30th, if the board wants to move the December 23rd meeting either forward a week or after a week if necessary. And I always say December 30th is the 5th Tuesday, and no one ever meets on the 5th Tuesday, except they did the last time I said that, so I'm not going to say that out loud. So what's the board's pleasure for December? Do we want to roll with the 9th and the 23rd? We don't have to make any decisions about that. I just want to, you know.
Okay.
Put that out for the board for their consideration and for their schedule.
I would prefer the 16th than the 23rd.
Okay.
I'd kind of be up against that.
Pretty busy that night.
Yeah, no, I would agree. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter. I'm not going anywhere, so.
I would tentatively set it for the 16th, and if we need to change it.
Okay.
Come back to it.
Very good.
So at this point, we're looking at November 4th if necessary.
Yes.
Veterans Day, November 25th, December 9th, and December 16th.
Very good.
Okay, thank you.
On the agenda this evening, we have a public hearing which has been continued. Three Rickets Pond Drive LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to Article 5-3 and Article 3-1, Section 290-2-2.3, Section 290-4-3.4A of the Carver zoning bylaw located at Three Rickets Pond Drive in Carver, Mass. Assesses Map 32 Lot 1-4 in the Spring Street Innovation Zoning District. This project will include the construction of second light industrial building, and I will be recusing myself from this matter and handing this over to the Madam Vice Chair.
Good, good evening. I'm Eric Schumaker from Mackenzie Engineering. I'm here with Mike Fuccini, representing the applicant and Three Rickets Pond Drive LLC. We last met on September 22nd, and we received an engineering peer review letter from Fussin O'Neil on October 7th. We believe we adequately addressed the peer review letter, and we provided a response to comments dated October 10th with revised site plan of the same revision date. With the revised site plan and response letter, we provided architectural plans from ResCom Architectural dated July 22nd and additional information relating to lighting of the site as requested. So with that, I'll run over quickly the changes that were made to the site plan. On Sheet C1, as you can see on the screen, wall pack locations were shown. The wall packs will be Slim 17 Ultra Economy by RAB Lighting. They will be motion activated with a height not to exceed 11 feet, and they will have a fully adjustable cutoff. We provided on the landscape plan Sheet LA1, interior lot landscaping calculations for the landscape islands adjacent to the parking area. You'll also see on the site plan additional pavement marking symbols were added. We also made the aisle adjacent to the parking stalls one-way as requested at the last meeting. The overhead doors and loading bays, as well as the pedestrian doorways, were added to the plan. You can see that in the site layout plan. We show symbols for each of those. We added snow storage locations to the landscape plan as well, and we revised the fueling and maintenance location to be moved further from the wetlands and to be bermed accordingly on the erosion and sediment control plan. So with that, I can answer any questions the board members may have.
You mentioned the one-way traffic flow. Still shown on the plan, it's two-way. I was just asking where you're talking, the area behind where the parking is there.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's the latest plan set.
Okay, so the traffic flow will be clockwise?
It's going to be clockwise in one way. Yeah, the latest plan set should have that revision date of October 10th in the top right, and those changes were made.
I think it goes on the same page wise, I think it should have noted for sure.
I don't have the revised plan.
Okay. You should all have the packet, the revised plans. They were delivered to the town hall. I can run out to my car and get a board and the plans if you need me to.
Tom, you got email on that? That somebody gave you or you bought it?
Somebody wanted to see the board.
I can, but I'm taking notes.
He said he could go out to his car and get a board.
No, Andy's, should we have it up on the screen?
Yeah, it's marked on this one. It's probably, that's, I think you see one.
Seven megabytes.
Mr. Glines, I noticed that you noted that the planning board shall include findings in regards to access connections. Are they not appropriately spaced, or?
Which comment number?
I only have the response and then the one you provided today, but it was comment number 14. The planning board shall include findings for this section with the decision letter.
I'll pull that up to.
Okay. For the applicant, with the addition of eight more parking spaces, what is the total amount of spaces on this?
I believe it's, the other site had 11, so it should be 19.
19. And you do understand that there should have been adequate landscaping to encompass the 19 spaces, but as it, which would have been about 19 feet, and I suppose we gave you a four-foot break on the last one. But we've, we have been over this multiple, multiple times in regards to the required amount of perimeter landscaping required in regards to parking spaces. And currently, it's at 19 feet. We've given you a break, so are you planning on adding more perimeter landscaping in regards to this?
So we show landscape plantings of trees and shrubs around the side of the proposed building. We also had an extensive landscape plan for the original building on Lot 4. You can also see the side yard buffer that we provide for this new development is 33.9 feet in both directions, so.
33.9 feet?
In both directions, yeah, on both sides, which is in excess of 19 parking spaces, or the 19 linear feet that calculation would come out to.
Right. But again, this is, this should have been thought of in the original plans if there had been any idea that you were going to add more spaces in regards to this, because I noticed one of your responses dismisses the front property line buffer in regards to this. We've been over it repeatedly, and I have quoted the particular bylaw that relates to this.
So we tried to address it by making this one, one way. By doing that, we eliminated some pavement there and provided a larger landscape buffer. We also have a fence. All of our neighbors are industrial at this site. It's an industrial park. The rear building cannot be seen from any residential abutters. It's over 100 feet away from the rear property line, and like I said, about 34 feet from both side property lines. So with that and the extensive landscaping that we provided, you know, in addition of the trees and shrubs originally for the development, I think the parking area will be adequately screened. It should also be noted that the parking spaces are behind the rear of the building, so no, no parking for this building will be able to be seen from Rickets Pond Drive.
Any videos?
Mr. Glines.
Andy Glines, peer review consultant for, on behalf of the town with Fussin O'Neil. I believe Mr. Shea was asking about the original Fussin O'Neil review memo that was dated October 7th. Item 14 referring to Section 290-4-3, is that correct?
Yes.
With, "Planning board shall include findings for the section with the decision letter," and that section specifically referring to the Water Resource Protection bylaw section. So I was just.
No, that's fine. When I looked it up, it said it was access connections. That's why I was, maybe I was looking at 3.3 instead of 4.3. That's why I wanted to clarify. Thank you. The same, the same, I expect the same things will, conditions will apply to this in regards that it will be clearly marked as not a public building, no 18-wheelers. We've just, I see you've discussed hazardous waste, and are you satisfied with the snow disposal areas?
Yes, we reviewed the applicant's response to comments and just issued a final review memo today. Understand that the planning board didn't have a chance to read that yet, but we did review the response to comments, and the applicant addressed all our previous comments that we had from the memo on October 7th. The final memo that we issued today just included our input on the requested waivers and recommended conditions of approval, which, as I understand, looking at the draft decision that Mr. Bott prepared are included in that. So at the moment, Fussin O'Neil doesn't have any further comments from the applicant, but can certainly provide any additional input or clarification for the planning board.
And do you feel that with the grading towards the wetlands, it'll be sufficient to draw away the water and prevent any sort of overspill?
I guess specifically with the edge of pavement here, the applicant is proposing a Cape Cod berm along that edge, so there wouldn't be any discharge of runoff from the pervious surfaces towards the pond. There will be some overland flow from the pervious and landscaped areas there, but, you know, nothing of notable concern in my, my opinion there.
Okay, as long as the, the waste system, the water system is capable of handling any issues in regards to that, so it won't overspill, I'm fine with that. Mr. Bott, did we have any concerns or issues with the fire department?
I'm waiting on the, on the fire department's confirmation that the access is adequate for the site. Typically, they review these things. I do have a condition that Mr. Glines recommended, number five, the town planner shall confirm the fire department approves the building layout as well as emergency access. Other comments from the fire department were about the potential for alarms and reporting, but other than that, we've gotten those comments from the planning board. I did have one question as well. We talked about in the November 2014, 24 decision that we cited a monitoring well at a specific site, and with this, the monitoring well is going to be relocated. Do we know where it's going to be relocated to? I don't know that I saw that on the, on the plan.
So I believe I show that on the utility plan, the Sheet C3. So if you look to the far right, just next to where it says Rickets Pond, I call out existing monitoring well to be relocated.
Yep.
I wanted to keep it, you know, roughly in the same area, so moving it to the landscaped area at a lower elevation like it was designed.
So that's its new location?
That would be its new location.
Because that wasn't clear to me if that was the existing one that's going to be relocated. That's where the existing one will be relocated to?
The existing one is just above the cement concrete dumpster pad.
Yep.
That's that pointer, and then it's, it's being moved.
Okay.
To the right of the page.
All right, so essentially still southeast corner. Okay, that was the one thing that wasn't clear to me. And I know that we had, in the previous decision, we had talked about access limited to box trucks. I don't know if it came up previously in the hearing. I didn't have it in my notes. But it is one of the, one of the conditions that was on the previous decision for this, and I included it in the event that that's where we're going with this one as well.
That's correct. Mike Fuccini, Three Rickets Pond, Boring Avenue. Mr. Shea just brought up the fact that we can't use any sort of big tractor trailers or anything like that, so that would limit us to those box trucks for sure.
All right. Because I used the previous decision as a template for this one.
And I take it the fuel management issues were addressed?
Andy Glines with Fussin O'Neil again. Was that a comment from the, the fire department with the fuel management?
It was brought up at the last planning board meeting, that the fuel, fueling and maintenance area was inadequately provided. It needed to be burned and sloped away from the wetlands.
Yes, we commented on that on the original review memo under the erosion and sediment control plan sheet, and that comment has been addressed because it wasn't included in our final memo that we issued today. I don't know if the applicant wants to weigh in on that provision that was made.
So regarding the fueling, fueling and maintenance location, it's really not anticipated to be used too often. We show it on the erosion and sediment control plan, and I moved it further to the northeast as, you know, far away from the wetlands as I could while being outside of, you know, operations for the original building. I added a call out that states that the area should be temporarily bermed to prevent any runoff from being directed at the eastern slope, and, you know, we'll do periodic inspections during construction to make sure that, you know, the project is being constructed according to the plans.
I don't believe I have any further questions.
It's a public hearing. Would anybody like to make any comments or questions?
Madam Chair, can I make a motion to oppose the public hearing then?
Yes.
I will second that.
Okay.
Hi. Kevin Robinson says aye.
And Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sidillo says aye.
And will you take a motion to approve the special permit for Three Rickets Pond Drive based on the conditions? Are we going to go over the conditions, or can we accept?
I would be happy to.
Can we accept them?
I'd be happy to go over them.
Okay. Why don't we do that then?
I will second that motion.
All right, so, condition number one is always the case prior to the issuance of a building permit. A copy of this will be filed with the Registry of Deeds and submitted to the Planning and Planning Office. The project we constructed is approved in the site plan. Other revisions will require approval from the board as a modification of the decision. Number three, the applicant is responsible for the proper operation and maintenance of the site. During construction, sediment and soil erosion controls shall be installed, repaired and supplemented as needed. Dust control is required during construction, and the roadway apron is to be kept swept and clear of dust, dirt, or debris. A copy of the operation and maintenance plan shall be submitted to the town, Fussin O'Neil, prior to the issuance of a building permit. Four, parking spaces required for warehouse and storage shall be verified once the estimated number of employees is known. Presently, six spaces are required. A total of eight are provided. Five, the town planner will confirm that the fire department approves the building access, building layout, as well as emergency access. Six, the installation of a supra key safe is requested for the keeping of keys and site contact information to facilitate rapid access in the event of an after-hours emergency. Seven, a six-foot-high vinyl fence set six inches above grade to allow for wildlife should be installed, as shown in the plan set. Eight, a site-specific storm water pollution prevention plan, SWIP, shall be provided to the town planner and FNO prior to the issuance of a building permit. Project-specific SWIP must address dust control. It should be noted that a SWIP for the subdivision has already been prepared by the developer and is included in the storm water report for Lot 6 submission. Nine, final plan set shall include a signature block for each sheet to note the planning board's approval. Ten, only household quantities of hazardous materials are permitted. Eleven, for Carver zoning article 3.5, a separate sign permit application is required or signage may be proposed to be included at the site entrance. Number 12, prior to the issuance of a certificate of use and occupancy, A, outstanding balances of ruv unit inspection accounts will be paid, and as-built, B, and as-built should be submitted to the town engineer and planning department, both in electronic and hard copy form prior to the final inspection, and C, in accordance with Section 3100, compliance, the town, or Carver zoning bylaw, the town's engineer shall inspect the project to ensure it's been completed in compliance with the approved site plan and its condition. Condition number 13, a dumpster pad should be bermed, and any runoff from the dumpster pad shall be contained to the catch basin on site. 14, an integrated pest management, IPM, consistent with Massachusetts 105 CMR Section 410.550 shall be implemented. 15, trucking access to the property are limited to box trucks. 16, the applicant shall propose, shall provide proposed size of water service, current water well yield, and demand calculations for the two buildings prior to the issuance of a building permit. This information shall also be submitted to the Board of Health. 12, due to the elevation of the site and the proximity of the limits to the disturbance of the pond and requirements for other monitoring wells within the subdivision, only one monitoring well, which is to be relocated, is required for the site. Testing criteria and frequency to be discussed and determined by the Board of Health, Conservation and Planning Board. It shall be noted that this section states that the cost will be borne by the property owner. 18, there will be no public access to these lots, and the property shall be signed as such. 19, Ricket Pond's, Ricket Pond Drive shall remain as a private road, or additional planting buffers shall be required.
No further parking spaces will be allowed. I think that's a fair condition considering what we've waived at this point.
No further parking spaces will be allowed.
Testing frequency, as long as we have Andy here, the board should come with its own consensus at this point, and that should be probably any annual testing, or what would your recommendation be?
So Andy Glines with Fussin O'Neil again. The initial intent on including monitoring wells on the individual parcels as part of the subdivision were to mitigate some of the public concerns as well as the planning board concerns with potential impact. as well as the planning board concerns with potential impacts to groundwater as part of this development. And we've been continuing to include conditions to require at least one, in some instances, two monitoring wells per lot. The actual installation of those wells is being done by the developers of each of those individual parcels. And the way we've written the recommended condition is that the frequency of testing and actual what is going to be tested is open for discussion between the planning board and really the conservation agent. I guess I'm not prepared to give any specifics on what criteria should be tested in those wells. But I think. At the, I guess I would, I'd recommend to the board that the condition not be tied to an individual development parcel, but to closing out the road itself at the end of the project. If, you know, there's an opportunity to do that, that way it's really on the developer of the subdivision road, and their responsibility to make sure that the stormwater treatment system for the road and the two infiltration basins are functioning appropriately. But the individual wells are located on, you know, the individual properties in the subdivision. So I think previously we haven't stipulated a testing frequency or testing criteria. So this would be the first parcel that we did that on. And I guess I think in order to capture all the parcels at once, it'd be better to do that as part of closing out the subdivision. But I know this is gonna be a private road, but I understand there's a bond in place, is that? So maybe as a condition of closing out the bond, you could establish testing frequency and criteria at that point.
Could we get a definitive for us, so that in the future that we're ready for this?
Yeah, Fussin' O'Neill could write up a separate recommendation memo to the planning board and the town planner. I'd wanna discuss that with the conservation agent too, to make sure, you know, their recommendation is also considered in that.
Absolutely. Thank you, I appreciate that. It'll save us a lot of headaches in the future and a lot of confusion down the line, so.
So at this point, I think we've got a motion from Kevin to approve with conditions?
Yep. And a second from Connie, so.
Abstaining.
Were you on ConCon when this was going through initially?
Yeah.
Were you there?
I'm pretty sure I was, yeah, that's why I'm abstaining, just because I don't, I'm not 100% sure, I can't remember, but I'm pretty sure I was, so. That's why, because of the potential conflict, so.
What if he wasn't there?
If he feels it's appropriate, that's up to him to, if it's...
Because I'm not 100% sure, I'd rather just.
There's no issue with abstaining. If, on the other hand, if he votes and he feels that it's an ethical dilemma or moral dilemma, then there's the problem.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Mayne votes aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Alan Sedillo says aye. Okay.
And Alan Maynor, who's voting on this, is an associate member. Do you have an aye?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye.
So just technically, we also have, because it's a site plan and a special permit, we need a vote for the site plan as well, just because. So I've got. 401 on the special permit and site plan. Alan does not vote because it's not part of the special permit, and you're abstaining, so we need a minority vote on site plan conditions as well. So if someone could move to approve the site plan with conditions?
I can do that.
And I will second it.
And he does, since he's abstaining, I will. Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
So Alan can't vote, okay. Alan Sedillo says aye.
Okay, so 301. Alright, we will get this signed into the town clerk. Alright? Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. Wayham Street Solar II LLC requesting a special permit and site plan review pursuant to section 290-3-1, 290-3-6, 290-5-3, and 290-4-3 of the Carver zoning by law located off Wayham Street in Carver, Mass. Assesses map 134, lots 4-2A, 4-2B, and 4-3 in the residential agricultural RA zoning district. The project consists of a large-scale, ground-mounted solar photovoltaic system with coupled battery energy storage system, BESS. Good evening.
Good evening. Stacy Minahan with Beals &amp; Thomas.
And Dean Smith with New Lake Energy.
So as noted, we're here tonight for a site plan special permit for a large-scale, ground-mounted solar project. This is the existing conditions plan up on the screen, and I don't know if it's helpful to scroll to the aerial overview, which is towards the end of the application. But regardless, it's a 29-acre limit of work. About 27 acres of that is panel fenced area. And it's on an overall 430-plus acre property, much of which is cranberry bogs and associated infrastructure, as well as wooded areas. There are also forested areas, many of which, or much of which is diseased. And there's also part of an existing solar array off Hammond Street that was previously permitted by the board and constructed.
I'm not seeing the aerial, what we're calling.
No, okay. Well, I did bring a board, if it's helpful to just. It's in the main application. Just because I think it's helpful to see. I will follow with the easel, but just so that you can see the site context. So this is the existing Zero Hammond Street project that's been constructed here. And then the site that's presently before you is to the south of that here. So you can see the overall property, it's all the red parcels. Wayham Street is in destruction. And this overall property is also subject to different zoning bylaws. A portion of it was subject to a definitive subdivision plan, so we've outlined that in the application as well. The site is within the residential agricultural district and the Water Resources Protection Overlay District. The application detailed compliance with the relevant zoning by law provisions, which I'm happy to go through or answer questions about as we have the discussion. There are three waivers that we're requesting. They are locating individual trees, given the nature of the project being a solar, brownmount project, and the wooded nature of this site. To locate the trees, we would locate 29, 27 acres of trees, so we're requesting a waiver from that. We're requesting a waiver from the landscaping plan requirement. Again, this is set back from public ways and abutters that are different than the landowner. And there's no landscaping proposed as part of the project. And then the final waiver that we're requesting is related to sightlines. It's over 1,000 feet from the nearest public way or residential property. And those are detailed in the application. So the project itself, in brief, is a nearly 5-megawatt AC ground-mounted solar energy system, and appurtenances including panels, fencing, battery storage, inverters, transformers, stormwater basins to address the change in runoff from the tree clearing that's proposed, site access, which will be over to Wayham Street, and then interconnection, which will be underground for the majority of the route. It does go overhead to cross an existing gas line easement, and also overhead once we get to the interconnection point at Wayham Street. Access is over existing agricultural roads. Improvements will be made to those roads. We did just receive a copy of the fire department's letter as well, which requested specific improvements, so we'll incorporate those updates into the plans. Grading has been minimized to that needed to accommodate the stormwater basins, so the approach to the design was to maintain the existing flow patterns. The stormwater system consists of surface infiltration basins. And that's the project in a nutshell, but happy to answer questions and talk through the plans.
Could you just point out to me, please, where exactly Wayham Street is?
Sure. It might actually.
I was wondering that too.
Yeah.
This is close by.
Right.
Is it here?
Yeah, it's along this property boundary.
It's, if you'd like, I can walk it up, because it's a very thin line.
So is it right here? It's hard to see because it's very.
I couldn't find it on the plans, I was going through them very carefully, but.
So. So it's this here, and then it follows the property line, which is part of ours.
Before you go anywhere, I'm trying to find out, because you've got a lot of what looks like lot lines on this, or?
Yes.
This is just chaos. There's just blues and yellows and reds everywhere. It's not, it's not very conducive to.
So this is our site.
Alright, and where's Wayham Street?
Here.
And where does it go?
Wayham Street?
Yeah, can you show me the?
Or the interconnection. So the interconnection route will follow existing bar roads up, and then over to Wayham Street.
Where's your frontage?
Along Wayham Street.
So Wayham Street is running along that boundary, or?
Correct, yeah.
Where's your access point to access this?
It'll be, that will show better on these plans, but it's, it is in this vicinity. So it's a new, new access, right?
It's an existing access.
Dean Smith for the record.
Just point out to me the area where the, where this array is supposed to go?
Here.
And that's all wooded?
It's wooded, yeah, as you can see on this aerial and a little bit more, even if you go back in time to like 2015-ish on Google Earth, there is a lot of diseased trees in this area, which was similar to Hammond Street as well.
Is that a river running along the back of it?
This is a reservoir, it's a river to the north. So there is riverfront area shown on our plans, it doesn't enter our site.
But the reservoir is there.
This is the reservoir, yep, and we have the 100-foot buffer zone and the 65-foot no-touch off of it as well.
Is that right at the corner? Excuse me. Sorry, got it. Is that by the bend, is that McGurk's that you're referring to, a reservoir? Or is it another reservoir?
I've not heard that name before. This here is the reservoir I was referring to.
Okay, alright. And where, Mr. Shea had asked your entry point?
It's in this vicinity, but it will be easier to see on the plan itself than on this aerial, because the trees are too dense.
Alright.
So just so you can see, this is, this is.
So this, through you, Madam Chair, this site is wooded?
It is.
This isn't even cleared?
It is not cleared, it's a wooded site.
I don't feel comfortable exchanging one resource for another. I don't like the idea of clearing all the property. I know you said that some of the trees are diseased, but I personally am not happy with that.
If it's alright, I'm just gonna leave this site and see if it's clear here. Thank you.
So this is similar in nature, hearing the comment, this is similar in nature to the Hammond Street site that was permitted and built as well. That was a wooded site that had similarly characteristic of the forested area.
And Dean Smith, for the record, Jesse from the fire department, when we had the technical review meeting, had also raised the issue that there's a lot of diseased and dead trees in the area, and that it created somewhat of a fire hazard. He didn't outline that in his letter, but he did mention it at our technical review meeting.
I'd like to hear that from him.
Right, because a lot of issues are raised by the fire department.
Have you gotten that?
We just received that today.
There's quite a few concerns.
Yeah, so the two main, I think, items that, and again, I just received it right before this hearing, they're reading through the letter, it's the access rights, which we typically coordinate with fire and will take their direction on what they would like for the access route, so we'll update the plans for that. There were also comments about access within the array and the module spacing, as well as the spacing between the fence, so we'll coordinate them about that. Oh, it's right there. Oh, no, that's agenda. They also, the second portion of the letter outlines what they'd like to see for the fire permit, application that will be required, you know, at a later time. So one and two was the site access and the solar access. Same for three was the fenced area, gates we will add. The address, we will coordinate with them to see what it should be called. That's the address that's listed for the property. The ground fuels management can certainly be submitted, and then the rest are, seven and eight are standard, you know, 24-hour entry, the lockbox type that they like, training to be provided by the fire department, which is typical, and we'll look at the discrepancy noted on the layout as well between the interconnection plan.
Does this cross lot lines?
I'm sorry?
Does this cross lot lines?
Yes.
What are the size of the battery storage to be? And how many are going to be there?
I'm not certain of these, we've just gone to a newer product, so. But I can certainly provide that for the next response.
Alright, because it's hard, it's impossible to tell how many are being proposed and whether there's sufficient clearance, and whether they are outside the 100-foot wetland boundaries.
They are outside the 100-foot wetland boundaries.
Yes. Yeah, they are outside the wetland boundaries. So the wetland lines are shown in blue for the wetland lines themselves, and then red is the 65-foot no-touch, and green is the 100-foot buffer. But yes, I anticipate we will be providing additional details on that battery energy storage area per Carver fires.
And it will necessarily be bermed? Battery storage area will be bermed?
It will be surrounded by a gravel area, it's not bermed.
It will be bermed.
It's unfortunate that you're putting this out in the woods, and you don't seem to have any concern as to what we would normally be addressing on a normal solar project.
I'm sorry?
I said it's unfortunate that you're just putting this out in the woods, and you have, you know, a reservoir going through it, and you think that maybe the other concerns that we would have with another project wouldn't be applicable because it's out in the woods, such as fencing, or buffer zones, or berms, or something like that.
Okay, I think I follow, although I'm unfamiliar with the berms, because I don't think any of the projects that we've permitted in Carver to date have had berms around the equipment areas. That said, we absolutely reviewed the buffer zones and stayed outside of them as much as possible, maintained the 65-foot. The only place where there's work within the 65-foot is within existing agricultural roads for the underground electric conduit, so it won't change the character of those. And then, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting what the other item was that you had noted. Wetlands?
The fencing.
Oh, and there is fencing proposed as well around the array.
No, but I thought there was a comment earlier about it was so far out that, you know, the only abutters would be the actual owner.
For sightlines. We're requesting a waiver from providing a landscape plan and a sightline plan because there are no views to the project, so not changing the design at all.
Okay. So you don't feel this is going to be visible from any area?
From public ways?
Right.
No.
Not from any streets, or even Hammond Street?
I, yeah, I would have to cut, your view would cut across the Hammond solar project, I think, from Hammond Street.
And I think the board would really appreciate a more clearly defined 65-foot, 100, and 200-foot boundary markers, they're very difficult to see here. But it looks like a lot of this is going to be within the 100-foot, I'm seeing 65-foot red lines, but I can't really tell what they are. I'm seeing blue lines that say wet, which I'm expecting is the edge of. I'm seeing blue lines that say wet, which I'm expecting is the edge of the wetlands.
Correct.
And then I'm seeing the 65-foot running right up to more or less the edge of the solar array, so I want to see where that 100-foot is clearly and definitively. Have you been in front of the conservation commission in regards to this?
We filed with them and our hearing is next week.
Do you plan on moving dirt or rearranging the topography of the land?
No, only to the... The grading that's shown on the plan is just what's needed to direct stormwater flows to the stormwater management system in accordance with the relevant requirements. I don't think this site required any grading to accommodate the solar array itself.
There's mineral grading.
Have you been in front of the conservation commission in regards to the all-weather access to this?
I'm not sure. I'm not following.
Well, you're gonna have to have 12-foot wide all-weather access acceptable to the fire department.
Yes, so that will be part, that is, access to the project is included as part of the application. So just like it's before the board, that access will be before the commission as well, including any revisions to the plans resulting from the Carver Fire Department.
It should be in front of the conservation commission at this moment in time?
Correct.
Right, okay.
We'll be discussing it with them next week at our first hearing.
That's what I was asking.
Yeah.
And can you show me where exactly the access would be if you have zero Wareham Street? Where is it going? Where will you gain access, whether it be permanent access or construction access?
Sure. I think, Dean, do you think C-3.0 is the best to pull up on the screen?
There's the access.
So if you look at C-3.0, actually, yep.
Up at the top of the sheet.
Yep, if you scroll up a little bit. Okay, so, and actually, I did bring a pointer that works on the screen. No, it doesn't. Okay.
Yeah, at the very top of that plan, if you can see the cul-de-sac. It was planned there, just south of that, that darker area.
And what is that cul-de-sac?
That's from the definitive subdivision plan.
Right, it's not constructed.
It's not constructed.
It was proposed. It's not constructed.
Was that Slocum Gibbs?
Pardon me?
I don't know. Was it Slocum Gibbs she's asking? I don't know.
And is that providing your frontage?
The cul-de-sac?
Right, yeah.
No, the frontage is on Wareham.
Very difficult to see on this.
The frontage is on Wareham.
So where's the cul-de-sac located? It's located on Wareham Street, correct?
It is.
The paper cul-de-sac. Slocum Gibbs.
And I'd like to see the proposed emergency access more clearly defined on these also.
I can't figure it out.
Yeah, because I don't want to see anything within the 100 feet clearly. And clearly, I want to make sure that the battery storage system is well outside and well protected from oil.
Curious to hear what they have to say about it before.
Plus, there's a reservoir there, which is direct access to water.
Does anyone else on the board have anything? Mr. Lyons, did you?
Andy Lyons with Fussin O'Neil, peer review consultant on behalf of the town. Fussin O'Neil has begun our review of this project. We haven't issued a comment memo yet. Working on updating some of our initial comments based on the presentation from the applicant and comments from the planning board this evening, and we'll work on issuing that to the applicant and the board as soon as possible. I can run through a couple of our initial comments verbally at the moment.
Please do.
I guess some of them have already been brought up by the board. I guess regarding the access roads, Fussin O'Neil typically defers to the fire department and will continue to do so on this project, but shares the board's concerns with if the access roads, the existing bog roads that are there need improvement or widening and grading that could impact adjacent wetlands or wetland buffer areas. So reiterate the importance of making sure that the applicant discusses that with the conservation commission and then I'd ask town planner Mr. Bott to make sure that any minutes or discussions as part of that commission are passed on to the planning board to make sure everything's consistent between both bodies. The applicant is showing an access road basically from one of the existing bog roads into the array, kind of the last leg of access. We were going to request an enlargement plan, basically at a better scale, to see that portion, because under my understanding, it's really that portion of the road that's going to have the, you know, really the bulk of the site improvements, where there is existing access there, but it's not a straight shot and not as... It's in lesser condition than the rest of the existing bog roads to that point. We are familiar with the adjacent properties. Fussin O'Neil did some of the reviews of the prior solar arrays over the years in this vicinity, so we are backchecking some of the previous reviews and conditions of approval and waivers for those to make sure we're consistent with this project as well. So we'll provide recommendations to the board on those matters. I was still trying to sort out that existing paper street subdivision and just... Actually, I'd asked for the applicant to clarify a little bit further, but my understanding, there's existing paper street that's currently shown on the plans. At one point, there was a preliminary subdivision plan that was before the planning board. I believe the name was Fox Hill Drive that didn't proceed to the definitive plan, at least that specific preliminary subdivision plan, which was at the time proposing a new cul-de-sac just to the south of the paper cul-de-sac that's shown currently. So I guess I just want to make sure and get some clarification that this applicant and this project isn't relying on anything that was outlined in that Fox Run Drive preliminary subdivision plan.
Yeah, we can reconfirm, but I don't believe so. The definitive subdivision plan that we're referencing was approved on September 21st, 2022, and we can get you more information about what that one was called, but I don't think it was that. Did you say Fox Hill Drive?
Fox with a... So I have all the old records, but a lot of these subdivision names tend to change names, so it's hard to keep track. So I wasn't able to sort that out yet, but any clarification would be good on that piece. And also, we'll be taking a closer look at the battery energy storage. Again, this is something that Fussin O'Neil coordinates and collaborates with the fire department on the review and have a lot of confidence in Deputy Fire Chief Boyle reviewing those pieces from his standpoint with NFPA code, but Fussin O'Neil will provide input on, you know, from what we can on our standpoint with electrical design and local bylaws. And some of the proposed grading is shown in the current application, but we did note that some of the contours aren't completely tied in around the infiltration basin, so would want the grading plan cleaned up a little bit more just to show full extents of the grading for those.
I just want to make sure you have the updated set that was submitted.
What's the most recent date?
October 14th is the stamped date.
It was resubmitted when we filed with the conservation commission.
Okay.
So there wasn't updated plan provided. You might have the original.
Revision with wetlands?
Yes, so it shows the wetlands in color and it references clarifying the stormwater design intent and that was...
So we had zero Wareham Street and then zero industry revised showing wetlands.
Okay, I'll make sure we're referencing that set in the review memo.
Yeah, I believe some of the grading is cleaned up.
Okay, great. So at the moment, those are our initial comments. We'll finalize our review memo and get that issued.
Thank you.
If the board would like us to weigh in on anything else tonight, happy to do that.
Thank you. Just another question. As I'm looking at that plan and you're pointing out what's on Hammond Street, can you show me, if that solar array is the one currently on Hammond Street and you're proposing to do something south of that, where are you coming in off of Wareham Street? And I'm looking at the map right in front of me.
I can't show you very well on the aerial. I can do an overlay for the next meeting, unless you can, Dean, just because it's hard to see through the trees where the existing roads are, but I think it's...
The gas line.
Yeah.
Just try to picture like where.
Where is Hammond Street?
Hammond Street is...
Cut across. So this is going to bear on my question. Does that existing array have the required frontage? Has it received a waiver from the ZBA in effect that it doesn't have required frontage? Is it non-conforming and therefore is it, we can't add more non-conforming to it? So, because you're crossing lot lines here and that existing array should have frontage, accessible frontage on some street, so it's very difficult to tell from this map. So maybe you can clarify that for me, too?
Yep.
Because if it doesn't, it's non-conforming, and if it's non-conforming, it's going to be very difficult to get approval to build on that line.
We can look into the permitting that was done for the existing array and confirm frontage.
I know the area very well and for some reason I'm looking at this and it still doesn't make any sense to me and nor does it make any sense to Mr. Lake, and he lives off of Wareham Street as well. I just...
I drive up and down it all the time and I'm trying to picture like where.
It's very hard to see on the printout of the aerial, I will acknowledge, just because of the tree cover. So on Google Earth, it's a little easier because you can scroll back and forth in time, different times of year, and also zoom in. So I do think the best place, actually, it's up on the screen now, to be able to see the access is on the plans as well. So you can see Wareham Street is the kind of two darker lines cutting across the left of the plan. Yep. And then the proposed access is that darker line coming in off of Wareham Street and then looping up and then following the bog roads, keep going across and then down right there to the south, following along.
It's double line. Is that the gas line? Probably the double line.
And then, yes, the gas line is the double line.
Okay, now it's starting to...
Yeah, and then it's cutting east into the array.
For sure, I'm going to want it clear for any emergency access, how to access this site.
Yes.
Looks like there's a lot of bog roads mixed in here. And is there a gas utility easement in regards to this property?
The double line that, yes, right there, that cuts east-west is a gas line and so that's why across that gas line, it goes overhead poles to cross that gas line.
And a plan for removal of non-functioning panels and batteries? That should be included? And you're asking for a waiver for the location of all 10-inch trees to be removed?
Correct.
And how many acres is this being proposed on? 27 acres?
The overall site, I believe, including access, is 29 acres. If you go to sheet C... Is it 2.0? Yep.
2.0.
This should say, I believe, if you go up to the top of the sheet, yeah, and then to the left that page, once it loads, if you can zoom in, that specifies the...
29.2 total.
25.94, so 26 acres of tree clearance is stumped removed and then outside of the fenced area, the stumps remain, so 29 acres total.
Full clearing of 29 acres. And a considerable amount of that, I'm expecting, is within the 100-foot buffer zone.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I'm expecting that there's a fair amount of that that's going to be within the 100-foot buffer. I can't tell. It's just not very clear on this, so I will reiterate that I...
We hear you. We can provide that number.
We should, at some point, arrange a sit log to see what will be...
That'll be interesting, yes. Any other questions from the board? Whereas this is a public hearing, is there anyone that would like to speak on this matter tonight? No? Okay. If there are no other questions, do we continue until...
I'll make a motion to continue. Do we want to continue it to the 4th or the 25th?
Andy's got some work to do, I expect.
Yeah, I would recommend the 25th, but I'd have to ask you how you feel about that.
So Andy with Fussin O'Neil again. I'm shooting for getting the memo out this week, but I can't guarantee that. But even if that were the case, that wouldn't give the applicant any time to respond to our comments, but I don't want to speak for the applicant if... But, you know, I agree that probably just continuing now to the later date in November makes sense.
Yes.
And that'll likely also give them a chance to get some feedback from the conservation commission. We've got a hearing next week with them, as you said.
Very good.
So I'm making a motion to spur it to be continued in here, the 25th.
Second that? Okay, Mr. Lake?
Carver Town Hall, room 1, 7:00 PM.
Very good.
Correct.
Will we be in room 1? Mr. Bott?
They should.
That is our typical meeting date and to the best of my knowledge, we will, but as you know, sometimes people swoop in, but I would ask them not to swoop.
All right. All right, very good. Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Owen says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Bott, we have discussed the future meeting dates.
Yes, ma'am. So our next meeting is, we've talked about, is for the 4th. And while we don't have anything pressing before us, we might want to take a moment to convene on the 4th. The select board has asked if there are any zoning articles that are proposed for town meeting. They need to be submitted completely by the end of this year, by the end of the calendar year.
For April?
No, by the end of the calendar year.
No, for the April meeting?
For the April meeting, yeah. So if there are any zoning articles, the board is considering. We need to, you know, talk about that at our next meeting.
Okay.
And so I can get a jump on that to make sure we've got things sort of crafted. We do have some unfinished business from town meeting that the board needs to make a decision on as well and we will have that discussion on the 4th as well. Because if they're talking about any completed zoning bylaw, then that would include the one we just had quite a bit of discussion about. include the one we just had quite a bit of discussion about over the last few weeks, which I don't think anybody's excited to go back to talk about. But I think the board needs to make some policy decisions about that. We talked about, has town meeting spoken with the votes that they've had? But once again, we just need to take some time and sort of figure out what we've got coming up for the next town meeting.
All right, so we will meet on the fourth?
So yes, I think a, a meeting on the fourth is probably a very good idea, just so we're on page. And then the next meeting after that will be, we'll be prepared for that.
Very good.
So we've got two other applications that are waiting to know when we're going to hear them. So likely on the 28th, we'll have a few things for the board to deal with. So get your rest, don't eat turkey before the meeting because you don't want any tryptophan, is it tryptophan? Whatever it is, no natural. It'll probably be a busy night, the 28th.
Very good.
The 25th, correct?
25th, thank you.
25th, yes.
25th of November, yeah. So I'm going to print this decision for the board to sign before you guys get too far away tonight.
All right, very good.
Hang on a minute, that's all I've got.
And the minutes? Yes. Are you all set for the minutes, Mr. Smith?
Oh, shoot. Mine are all online. I did have only one concern and it said, at the public hearing, I believe it was regarding duplex houses, we rescinded, Ellen and I rescinded our motion. We didn't change our vote to know. We rescinded our motion to close the public hearing and we reopened it. So I wanted to clarify that in the minutes.
Okay.
But not having them directly in front of me, I can't recall which one it was.
Well, whereas we are meeting on the fourth, we could also.
A second here, it wasn't.
One of them, I wasn't here anyway.
It wasn't that one.
August 1st.
It must have been.
August 12th?
August, August 12th. And it was a public hearing for 86 High Street. Close the public hearing. We rescind our motion, page three, August 12th, the last complete paragraph. Instead of rescinding our votes, we rescinded our motion. That's the only edit I have off the top of my head. Thank you, Kevin.
And you're all set? Everyone's all set on the July 22nd?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 22nd, 2025.
Very good. Mr. Lake?
I wasn't here, so.
Oh, that's right, okay, very good. Mr. Robinson?
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sivelo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2025 as amended.
I'll second that.
You were here? For the 12th, yes.
I believe I was, yes, so.
Mr. Robinson?
Kevin Robinson says aye and Curtis, you were here.
Yeah.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Ellen Sivelo says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye. Very good. Meeting to, a motion to adjourn, maybe? Very good. Mr. Lake?
Aye.
Kevin Robinson says aye.
Mr. Shea says aye.
Mary Ellen Williams says aye.
Thank you, Andy.